Call meeting in order, oh please rise. Today I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. Please drive me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kirk, please take the roll.
Alderman Brennan, Alderman Begley, Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski, Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Scully.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
No special presentation tonight, under consent calendar, we've got the approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting from March fourth, twenty twenty five, along with the City Council Meeting from March twenty, March fourth, twenty twenty five, and the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending March fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Need a motion to approve said.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bassow. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
All right, we've got an assortment of bids openings tonight, which one are you going to start with?
Uh, we're gonna start with the water main lining.
Water main lining, okay.
This one is from Sheridan Plumbing and Silver Inc. One million forty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. This one is from Fairpaw Construction L. Limited, and it looks like there's... If it's the same company, there's a Fairpaw, two, two packages from the same company, it looks like. Okay, this looks like their permit and, this just looks like their permit and their, what's that? Yeah, this is, this is just their permit and license and license, license and insurance information. Fairpaw, Fairpaw Construction USA, one million forty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And then this one is Aries Inc. One million five hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. And those are the three bids for the water main line. The next bids I'll open are the Herald and Cypress Lane project. The first one's from McGill Construction LLC. Six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and six, nine, nine sixty-eight and fifty-one cents. Next one is Davis Concrete Construction Company. Four hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. The next one is M. and J. Five hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety cents. M. and J Asphalt Paving Company Inc. Next one is K. Five Construction Corporation. Five hundred and four thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. The next one is Builders Paving. Four hundred and ninety-five thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Next one is Schroders, Schroder Asphalt Service Inc. Five hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty cents. The next is Lindahl Brothers Inc. Five hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. The next one's Deconstruction Inc. Five hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. The last one for this project is Abbey Construction Company Inc. Five hundred and forty-four thousand forty-six dollars and seventy cents. The final project that we'll be opening bids for is the Road Resurfacing Project. First one is McGill Construction. Eight hundred and four thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and twenty-nine cents. The next one is Davis Concrete Construction Company. Seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy cents. The next one is M. and J. Again, this is M. and J Asphalt Paving Company Inc. Seven hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. The next one's K. Five Construction Corporation. Eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. The next one's Builders Paving LLC. Eight hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy cents. The next one's Gallagher Asphalt Company. Seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and forty dollars and sixty cents. Next one is Schroder Asphalt Services Inc. Seven hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents. The next one's Iroquois Paving Corporation. Seven hundred eleven thousand five hundred and seven dollars and eighty-two cents. The final one is Lindahl Brothers Inc. Six hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
That's it?
That completes the opening of the bids for the three projects tonight.
Since these go to a couple of different committees, I'll just need a motion to approve them, to send them to the appropriate committee.
Move the votes in next, roads and construction.
Well, depending which one it is, some are gonna go to water and sewers, so to the appropriate committees then, so if you take that motion. Is there a second to that?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries, thank you, all right. Reports, before we get into my actual report, just want to remind everyone, this is, kids are out of school for a break here coming up. Drive safely and slowly down the side streets, please, as they start going to sports programs and alike, we got, you know, some youngsters walking through, through town, so keep that in mind. And today, as you noticed, it was in the seventies, as I watched the five o'clock news tonight, it's supposed to be a two inches of snow tomorrow. So the public works people will be out, it's just as normal, like, like they normally are. And then I heard there's an election on April first, so that being in mind, we'll cancel the meeting for April first, since... And then as far as the formal things on my report, I need a request to appoint Lisa Bano's Cruz to the Public Arts Commission for a three-year term expiring on March eighteenth, twenty eight, twenty twenty-eight, so make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Alderman Scully, is all in favor?
Aye.
Request to approve the appointment of Richard Cruz, happens to be her husband, to the, also to the Public Arts Commission for a three-year term expiring on three eighteen, twenty twenty-eight, need a motion to that effect. Moved by Alderman Clifford.
I have a second.
Second by Alderman Scully, any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Then I have a motion also to adopt a, increase the liquor license by one, this is for the Hunan Inn. Some of you may or may not be aware, the Hunan Inn closed at year end, they sold it after thirty-some years in, you know, in, in business, and these are their new owners, they actually have five restaurants in Chinatown now, and Sung, who happens to be one of the former owners of Hunan Inn, who still lives here over in Country Squire, he's gonna help them get through the transition period, so, so, nice, nice young lady, and had a lot of experience, and the menu hopefully will remain the same, because it's like my favorite Chinese restaurant.
Be the same hours operation?
Uh, probably, yeah, for the most part, yeah. So with that, I'll request a motion to adopt, or make motion by Alderman McGovern?
He's already gone a couple.
I know, you can have, with him gone, I figured I'd get that right.
Change my name?
Yeah. McGrogan, is there a second, by Alderman Scully?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Um, Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Scully.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's it. City clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, no reports tonight. Oh, that the election, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the election is coming up this next Tuesday, early voting has begun, you can go to the Palis Heights Rec Center for early voting on the day of the election, April first, you'll go to your assigned polling places. Polls will be open till seven PM that evening.
Thank you. City treasurer?
Thank you, no reports tonight.
Uh, city attorney?
No report.
Any communications, yes, Alderman?
I just wanted to say that our thoughts and prayers are with Alderman Lewandowski, he's lost his mom this weekend, and so...
Yes, thank you, appreciate it, and the WACO's this weekend, so for those of you who elected for take, so we're at Crowley's. See, any citizens wishing to address the council, yes, Joan, name and address, please.
My name is Joan DeVito, I live at one-two-two-three-two South Seventy-first Avenue. I just have a few questions to ask you, Mayor Strauss. When you, what did you purchase the home for at one-twenty-three-thirteen South Seventy-first Court? What did the city purchase that home for?
It's Nicholson's home?
Yeah.
Uh, for a potential, short-term, we're gonna rent it, potentially, at some point in time, the plan would be to hopefully make it part of the business district, as part of the comprehensive plan that was approved in twenty nineteen, was, is parcels of property in the business district or near the business district come up for purchase, we should try to make, to buy, to accumulate them for future use, but short-term, there's no, no plan on tearing it down.
No, I know, but how much did you, how much should you buy it for?
Five twenty, I think it was.
Five hundred and twenty thousand?
Give or take, five twenty-three or something like that.
So he was, you said at the, um... What was that called, not your debate, I know, the town hall meeting.
League of Women Voters.
Town hall meeting.
The League of Women Voters.
Okay, thank you. You said that, um, you, yeah, you were gonna rent it short-term, what is, how long is short-term?
There's, until we get the plan devised, and under the business district, you know, it could be a couple of years for that matter, you know. There's no immediate...
So you're gonna rent it to other rent, like if she, if the current person that lives in there decides to leave?
She, she's gonna leave after the school year, yeah.
But you'll get someone else in there to rent?
Exactly.
And then who's gonna maintain the exterior and the interior of the home?
Depending on the terms of the lease, you know, ultimately, the city's responsible for it, but normally, the lease would kind of have them do the maintenance and the maintenance and the grass and such, yeah.
And then if any appliances should break down, like a water heater or a furnace?
Again, it'll be based on how the terms of the lease are written, yeah.
And then I have a few questions for Alderman Bassow and Alderman Clifford. I'm from Ward Two, and myself and numerous residents came, probably about, I don't know, when it was in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, to ask you not to vote for the parking lot, which you did vote no, which we thank you for, but I was just current, wanted to know what's happening now, like recently, Mayor Strauss said that he asked if the, you would continue looking into the parking lot, you're continuing to look into the house, like it would be, I believe you said, in December of last year? And you both said yeah, that you agree with that, that you would look into continuing this route of possibly tearing the house down and turning it into a parking lot, and I just wanted to know, why would you vote that way? When you know you have numerous residents in your, in that location that have asked you not to vote that way?
So, you wanna know what the future of the house is?
No, I wanna know why you voted that way. Why would you do that when you know full and well, you have people who vote for you, who put you in office, and they asked you not to vote in favor of that?
Well, just a few people that were up here at the time to put out notices about it. When that first came up, back way before that came up, I originally voted no against it, majority of council voted for it. Since then, since they're gonna buy it, I tried to get the best possible fit, if that was gonna be happening, for the residents there to protect their property, such as the tryst of line, traffic going in and out of the neighborhood, and put all those guidelines in, and hours of operation. Right now, the houses are sitting there, it's a dismay, and sooner or later, we're gonna have to probably take it down and lease grass over the lot until affirmative answer is made on it, or...
Well, you already agreed to bulldoze the property down, because you said it was, it didn't look very nice.
I did what?
You said, you agreed that you were gonna, you already voted on the fact that you're gonna tear the house down.
I didn't vote, they, they voted on it and proved it a lot.
On bulldozing it down.
Are you talking about the thing, I said that the lot, the house was probably gonna be torn down, and a lot...
Well, that's another point.
And I'm not gonna argue with the, and the lot, the grass over for safety, because the house could be a deterrent right now the way the condition is, and it would be better to take it down, grass over the lot, fix some of the drainage in there, rather than have kids being curious going in there, yes.
But Alderman, as Mayor Strauss just said, the city is taking care of the property that you just purchased at one-twenty-three-thirteen South Seventieth Court, is Seventy-first Court, if you had a problem with one-twenty-three-oh-three, why wouldn't you get the city involved and tell them they need to clean up and take care of it?
Well, first of all, that's not, this is not the forum for this, what you're trying to bring up, you're supposed to, you know, we're not supposed to answer your questions, for one, okay?
Oh, okay.
But the other thing is, we are gonna tear it down, we've already voted to do that, so it's, we're gonna tear it down, and make it a grassy area in short-term, no, long-term, will it be parking lot, could very well be.
Okay. But I just wanna remind you both, that this is gonna bring in additional noise, garbage, traffic, we're gonna have to deal with parking lot fixtures in our backyards, and, you know, it's, most importantly, it's going to, to financially cause a loss to all of us, because you're, and you're not, you're not fighting for us, you guys are doing what you wanna do, and I think that's wrong.
Thanks, Joan. Any other citizens, please, just, Harland?
Harland Y. Voda, seventy-six forty, West Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street. On, on behalf of myself, I did attend your, your guys' League of Women Voters thing, and I thought it was quite interesting, and actually it was, it was quite a night tonight, I wish everybody well and hope everybody were able to win, unfortunately, not everybody's gonna be able to win. But the reason that I, for some reason, I thought tonight we were voting on the annexation of Shepherd in the end, so, since I had my thoughts together, I figured that I'll say my piece. Anyways, the only argument, good argument, that I heard, which is a bad argument, was that they are, the, the children who go to Shepherd are our children. Well, unfortunately, Palis Heights has a very poor school districts, if you wanna call it that, academic leader, good, but in terms of our kids go to Catholic high schools, our kids go to public high schools, our kids go to two different high schools that are public, our kids go to different grammar schools, I mean, sadly, to save for a town our size, for us, as many different schools we go to, it's, it's kind of a shame, but I would bet that of Shepherd's students, I would bet probably seventy percent to eighty percent are not from the city of Palis Heights, I bet they're unincorporated, and so, we are going to be voting on something and open us up, up this town to a lot of liability for something I don't really believe we need. My, my children, I even asked for that same argument that, that you're talking about annexing Shepherd, was that our children in our subdivision and Alderman McGrogan subdivision, our kids go to Palis West for grammar school, when we live in the city of Palis Heights. So the police department that's protecting us and the fire department that's protecting our children, isn't our Palis Heights, even though we vote for the mayor and all the Alderman, our kids go to all the way to West, why, when Palis Heights is a lot closer, but so be it, that's what it is right now, but I did ask the City Council if they could possibly help us with that, because Dr. Rosemarie Carroll promised me that when they put the additions on, that our subdivision would remain in Palis East, unfortunately, she died, and so the, the, the new administration never honored her promise. So, I believe that if Shepherd were to take all of our children, oh, that would be a great thing, but because they, they're only gonna be protected, there's so many, I just think, you're opening up a can of worms, let Crook County have it, and let our police department help them, if that's the case, but I don't think it's really something that's in the city's best interest to, to open up the potential for huge lawsuits, the potential for problems, for something that we really hasn't been there for this amount of time, and the fact that, like I said, our school districts are all over the board, I mean, our police department doesn't protect all of our students in this town, so, thank you, and that's pretty much what I was gonna say.
Just so you know, those are all Shepherd students right in front of you, so...
Yeah, sir. They're not, they live in Palis Heights. How many live in Palis Heights? You got three.
Point.
Now, it would be great if, if, if somehow you were to annex all the unincorporated areas and Shepherd, that would be, that would be something really good.
It's not our call. All right, any other citizens? Okay. Reports, finance, Alderman McGrogan.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there's nothing official on the agenda, except I just wanna compliment our city treasurer, Jim Damakee, in that League of Women Voters, Jim did an excellent job, as well as the other candidates, and explaining to the people that were in attendance and also the people viewing on TV, the state of affairs financially that the city's in, and as you could see, which was all excellent, by the way, and however, as Jim pointed out in the meeting, we have a lot of contingent liabilities for things that are on the agenda, and, well, more, more importantly, things like, you just saw the, the city clerk going through all those bids, which represents like over about a million and a half dollars easily if all those bids are done and accepted, and that's just a step down, and as Jim pointed out, out of the funds that we have, which is just short of thirty million dollars, when, when it all, which sounds like a tremendous amount of money that we have to work with and to improve the city, which we've done in all sorts areas like rec and other areas, the pool, things of that nature, that's where the money goes, for fixing up the pool, right now we're looking at almost a couple of million dollars to fix the pool up, and, like, the only reason I bring it up is that when, when people look, because we also, people that are in this diocese go to these different functions, and they say, we have a lot of money, why don't you waive this and waive that, don't charge us for this, or water, or whatever, we can't do that, because we have like all sorts of bills that are out there... that are out there and that are gonna be coming, because the city is like incorporated nineteen fifty-nine. Older than almost everybody in the room, but maybe me. And, um, anyhow, so we need those funds to operate the city into the future. So people like you that are, and the young boys over from Shepherd, when you're our age, you have a city that works and functions. And it's the only reason I wanted to point it out is, because it was a perfect example tonight. I wasn't planning on saying anything, 'cause my voice isn't great. But with all those bids, you can see how much money it takes just to do two or three things. And, and to click a hat, we're just gonna be out a million and a half dollars. And we have a, we have a estimate of, was it about twelve million, Jim? For underground that we're gonna spend in the next five or ten years?
That's, that's on the most, yeah.
Yeah. So of that twenty-eight, it's gonna get whittled down pretty quickly. So, um, and I just wanted to compliment you, the report you gave at the meeting. A lot of people have said to me, that was an excellent report, and, um, and the whole thing was very professional by all the candidates. That's the end of my report.
Yeah, and just a point of information, uh, one of the reasons we are, have, money we do have, as I looked at the financials the other day, and, uh, last year, we were actually over in revenue and under in expenses. So it's a combination of both, which allowed us to have a surplus at the end of last year.
It's about a million dollars.
Yeah, it's a million dollars, right, one nine sixty. But it's a management on both sides of the balance sheet or the income statement, so it actually, all works out good, so, uh, thanks a lot. Alderman Basso, public safety?
I have no items on the agenda, Mayor. However, um, I'd also like to remind all of our residents to be on the lookout for motorized scooter riders. I noticed, uh, several of them out already, a very dangerous situation. Um, it's not that they're dangerous enough, but I, I ran to, I didn't run into him, thank God, but I, I did see one, um, sitting down riding on a scooter, so not only is that thing low to begin with compared to a vehicle, but now they're trying trick rides. And, um, I do have a safety tip, but I think I, I think I've depressed myself with all the scams out there, so I might pass on that one today.
Thank you.
I'll hit you up with it next time.
Appreciate that, okay.
That's the end of my report.
All right, Alderman Begley did not have a report, as I understand. Uh, Plenny Zoney and Alderman Scully?
Uh, no report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Recreation, Alderman Key?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five memorandum of understanding between Lake Catherine Nature Center and the city of Pelas Heights.
So moved. Moved by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Clifford.
And, um, just if anyone has any questions, Gareth is here from Lake Catherine, in case. Does anyone need any information?
Anything new in it, Gareth? Any added amendments or anything?
Um, well, there was a couple of things, it's, it's, um.
Gareth, do you wanna come up here?
Yeah, sure.
You need some more face time?
I can be here in a couple of weeks. So what it basically did, it actually provided, it's sort of like, if, one of the things when we started this process is we wanted to get more clarity on the reports. So I actually refined a few things with the relationship with the city. But it also kind of provided a, a bit more of a framework for like the interaction between the city and the nonprofit as well. For example, uh, April fifteenth, I'm gonna be coming here and presenting the annual report. That's gonna be, that's in the MOU as one of the things that I'll be doing. So it's kind of like a little bit of that clarification, a little bit of being able to see reports, and, uh, and I think, I think that kind of covers me.
And then it's a, a ten-year instead of a five-year?
Right.
Great.
Thank you, Gareth.
Any other questions?
Any question?
I just wanted to know that part.
All right, call the question then. Roll call.
Alderman Scully?
Uh, yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve payment number seven to Simpson Construction, the amount of two forty-two, two oh one, and fifty-two cents for work completed for the pool improvement project.
Move by Alderman Keys or second? Second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve fence proposal and, uh, equal share purchase with School District one twenty-eight from K Brothers Fence at Passerelli Park in the total amount of forty-two fifty-three and no cents.
Move by Alderman Key?
So moved.
Seconded by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes. And then I'd like to make a motion to approve purchase of pool alarm system equipment and installation from Johnson Controls in the amount of thirteen one fifty-nine and sixty-six cents.
Move by Alderman Keys or second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Rules of construction, Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve resolution for the twenty twenty-five, uh, road salt purchase.
Second.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Basso. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
Uh, next, motion to approve resolution to utilize MFT funds for the twenty twenty-five road resurfacing program and salt purchase.
Move by Alderman Clifford, sir, second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
And next, motion to approve resolution to utilize the re- rebuild Illinois funds for the Herald Avenue and Cypress Lane reconstruction.
Move by Alderman Clifford, sir, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Basso. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
And next, motion to approve repurchase of two dump, dump bodies and plows for the twenty twenty-five International HVAC five oh seven dump trucks with Henderson Products through the NPP contract number PS two-two-one-seven oh in the amount of two hundred and, uh, twenty-seven dollars and eight, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which is a savings of, uh, eighty-two hundred dollars.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Basso. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
And lastly, a motion to approve payment of mortgage engineering for various services and various projects throughout the city in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
Move by Alderman, uh, Clifford, is there a second?
One thousand forty-seven dollars.
Nineteen one forty-seven point sixty-four.
Gotcha.
Sorry.
Okay. Seconded by Alderman Basso. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Scully?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
And, uh, last year, we had sixteen events of snow. We used three hundred and eighty tons of salt, thirty-seven hundred dollars of, uh, liquid in the streets, and, uh, that's not counting anything coming up in tomorrow or the next day.
Okay, great, hopefully.
End of my report.
Right. License and permission franchises, I don't think Alderman Lewandowski had anything, and along with Alderman Brennan, will report, business and economic development. Alderman Key?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanna point out that we're still a month away, but, um, or about six weeks away, but, um, uh, Farmer's Market's gonna start up, um, May through October, eight to one o'clock every Wednesday. So get ready for that. Although, we're not gonna be able to do it if we keep on having snow intermittently.
It was seventy today, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Cable TV, Alderman's government?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pr- present the, uh, state of the station for twenty twenty-four for Pelas Heights, uh, TV Four. During twenty twenty-four, Pelas Heights TV Four channel, uh, Pelas Heights staffed, oriented, scripted, and produced and aired three hundred and twenty-three shows for television viewing. These same shows generated over thirty-five thousand views on YouTube. The focus of these shows is to bring transparency and report on economic, economic development, provide educational information, and information about outreach programs for our local and regional communities. The Pelas Heights TV Four team has made many new approved technological upgrades in twenty twenty-four. All of the old, for instance, all of the old manual failing equipment has been removed from the control room, which is allowed for a transition to an efficient, computerized, on-air process, which broadcasts the signals to Comcast and AT&amp;T. This new system provides the option for, now to broadcast live each city council meeting via the internet for global viewing. In addition, energy-efficient lighting and upgraded audio systems were added for improved video and sound, uh, quality. This all is on a very shoestring budget, I might add. Um, of note, I would also like to point out and congratulate the Shepherd High School students of the Business Professional of America, BPA, team, recently recorded a news program in Pelas Heights TV Four studio and took second place in the Business Professional of America State Competition and has qualified for the national competition in May. I'd like to call special attention to the programming of the mayoral, treasorial, and alterperson candidate forums hosted by the League of Women Voters. They will be aired on Channel Four and available on YouTube throughout March until the election on April first. Uh, all the other shows running this week will include a program on veteran affairs, police updates on scams, the Community Bridge, the Community Bridge, excuse me, the spotlight programs on local high school sports teams and clubs. All of the above could not be accomplished without tremendous dedication of each staff member and volunteer throughout the year. I'd like to share a, uh, an, an email that I came across from a counterpart at Comcast from, um, Johann Fernando dated March third, twenty twenty-five, to Ron Jankowski, uh, regarding, uh, the subject is Channel Four Pelas Heights. "Ron, I'm very grateful for your leadership in the production space and the numerous communities in the South suburbs footprint that you have helped. I am so impressed on you, how you have elevated Pelas Heights Four to what it is today, one of the premier community access channels in the greater Chicago region, in my view. You continue to raise the standards for your channel every year, and you expand the reach of your channel as well. You will always be a pleasure to work with. I want to thank you always for treating me with respect and dignity and, and, and for your sincerity and genuineness of character. I look forward to, to continuing to hear much about the great things that will come to you with Channel Four. Let's stay in touch." Johann Fernando, Comcast, Siege, Senior Manager, Government and Regulatory Affairs, Oak Brook, Illinois. Some personal comments that I have after, I, I took a, a wonderful tour of the facility and had a nice, um, discussion with, uh, Ron Jankowski, uh, Dave Wurzall, and, uh, Janine Kakmar. Channel Four is one of the many jewels in the crown of, of Pelas Heights. In the southwest suburb area, we are without peer in program, stu- studio, and talent. According to the folks at Comcast, the closest comparison is that of Naperville. We need to make sure that this jump continues, continues to grow in the years to come, and to do that, they will need the continued support of this city and this very council. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any old business? Anyone in? New business? Oh, you're sorry, Swiss citizens wish to ask questions?
Mayor, I have a new business.
New business? Yes, sir.
Um, I was thinking, we have quite a few different committees, and I was just gonna, uh, recommend, maybe we consider having like a consumer corner. You know, maybe Alderman Basso or somebody would like to do it, um, because, um, you know, I like volunteering, Bob, and, um, but I, and I actually had a few things to bring in as examples, but as luck would have it, as I'm getting older, I forgot. And, um, so, like, there's a lot of things, especially that, um, 'cause Bob always points out these scams and everything. And, but there's a lot of good things that we see in the town and the city. And however, like, um, I'm sure you're all, when you get the, your mail and stuff, you s- and I just saw one, and I did the math, because, you know, it was a financial thing, and from a bank. And the bank was touting that, you know, you could get like a thousand or two thousand or three thousand dollars if you opened up a checking account, had your deposits put in, and this and that, and you could keep the money in there for like ninety days, and then after the ninety days, if, um, the bank's still in existence, um, they would, forty-five days after that, they would, um, mail you a check. And anyhow, when you did all the money, when you did all the math, um, it was a really bad deal for the average consumer. And, um, you know, and, and they're always in those like mail it things that you get, you know, like, and I don't wanna mention the name of the bank, 'cause I actually do business with them. But, um, anyhow, I think that just that made me think, there's a lot of things that Alderman Basso brings up that are like bad, but we also have a lot of good things that happen within the city. You know, like if the ice cream place is having a special, or if Jewel's having some kind of a thi- you know, whatever. And I just thought, maybe, you know, uh, we could put on the, on the agenda, and somebody has a committee, or maybe the, after the election, the next whoever's in charge says, okay, we're gonna have a consumer corner. And, you know, you never know, there might be a scam that we wanna alert people to. And, um, and on the other hand, we might wanna tout that, you know, you can go over and play golf at one of the golf places for a half price on Wednesdays or something. You know, I mean, it just might make sense.
I think it'd be as, as simple as, I mean, comments for the good of the, uh, population or, you know, the citizens or something like that.
But especially on, on things that the average person, um, might fall for, and especially since we have a lot of senior people that you're always reading about getting scammed. And I think that, um, uh, you know, all you gotta do is talk to the police, they're always, uh, cracking, tracking down things, so just something to think of.
They might be able to get your show on Channel Four.
Yeah, well, and who's gonna star in it?
And we do a lot of stuff on Channel Four just like that, too, you're right.
Right.
All right. Any other citizens? Uh, new business? Yes.
Uh, recently, I got a, a request the other day of a Vietnam vet that's not doing too well. Agent Orange related probably, but he fell, concussion, moved him to a nursing home. It's in hospice. They're gonna bring him home, but he's gonna need a, a ramp or a lift, uh, to get access to his home. Uh, they're over remodeling the house now, making it's all being donated, uh. And the person that called me said they would donate to a builder, they would donate to labor and everything. And what we're doing is looking out for possibly materials, if it's a ramp and or lift. If anybody knows anybody or anything, wanna get involved with it, or even the kids cleaning up the house over there and everything, you know, you can get hold of me. Number's on the website now. Could greatly appreciate it, and the name of everybody that served in that conflict back in the sixties. Thank you.
Okay. If nothing else, move to, uh, move to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters.
Second.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Do you guys need a signature or anything? Do you guys need a signature?
The much-needed renovation of City Hall failed after eighteen months of committee work, even though the electric wiring has been described as dangerous. The HVAC system will still need upgrading, and the bathrooms are falling apart. We are failing to be good stewards of city property.